Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
It's November 12th, 2024. Time is 6:15. I'll convene this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording? Seeing none, please stand if you are willing and able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do not believe we have any minutes to approve this evening. So I'm going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is to consider the request for the Hingham Historical Society for Determination Under the Preservation Restriction Related to the Old Ordinary. Is Deirdre online?
Hi.
Hello.
Yes. How are you?
We see a nice picture, but are you going to be live with us?
We are. Let's see. How do you think I do this?
There you go. There you are.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi. Select Board, this is Deirdre Anderson and Jim Taylor.
How are you?
Good thanks, Deirdre Anderson, 310 Colony Road, Hingham.
Jim Taylor, 3 Griss Mill Lane in Hingham.
We're zooming with you from the storage room at the Old Ordinary. Just for the full effect, actually, we're hosting our November Board meeting here at the property this night. So thank you for considering us and adding us to the agenda. We are before you tonight because the Town of Hingham... Are you hearing us okay?
Yes, we are.
We're here before you tonight because the Town of Hingham has a preservation restriction agreement on the Old Ordinary as a result of community preservation funds the society was awarded in 2004 for a drainage system around the House Museum. As with CPC guidelines, whenever a community does grant organization funds for historic preservation, a preservation easement is put on the property. So we have a preservation easement that is unique, and it requires Select Board approval of any planned changes to the structure. And we are planning to take an underutilized workroom here at the Old Ordinary and convert it into accessible restrooms. And we are planning to do this with support from a state grant from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism for destination development. And in addition to the accessible restroom to service the Old Ordinary House Museum and the Benjamin Lincoln House Museum across the street, it would mean an accessible pathway from our parking lot. And ultimately, given the larger Old Ordinary campus improvements, we are planning accessible entrances to all three buildings on the property.
So I'm correct? Just make...I want to make sure I'm correct. So the access to the restroom would be both inside as well as through...
The exterior modifications to the building, which would include converting a window to a door and having an exterior light fixture added.
And did the HTC, did they conclude their hearing?
Yes, they did. They gave us a unanimous support for a certificate of appropriateness.
Great. And even though it was not within their jurisdiction, did they review what was proposed inside the house?
We did not. We showed them photographs of the workroom that we would be converting, and we shared with them the architectural renderings, but we did not discuss in detail the interior changes.
So you are the closest we have to an expert on this. What is your opinion in terms of the impact of these internal changes?
Thank you. We take seriously any work we do on any of our properties, and it is our mission. And what we also know, in order to get the public to appreciate historic preservation, we have to get them in these buildings and while they are visiting us, be able to accommodate visitor needs. Currently, the restroom at the Old Ordinary was installed in the attic in the 1950s.
How can we...
And the only running water in the Old Ordinary, which makes a difference for museum cleaning, is also in the attic. This room that we are proposing to convert to a restroom was at one point the meeting room for the Hingham Historical Society when this was our only property in the early part of the 20th century. It was in addition to the historic structure in 1933 and has been used over the years as a meeting room, an office, for a short time, a gift shop. It was the original out-of-the-ordinary gift shop. And then for the last 30 years, it has been a volunteer workspace storage room. And that is why we chose it, because it is not part of our historic interpretation of the house. And we thought it would serve our visitors best and our volunteer corps to have it in the main structure, but in a room that was not part of the Colonial House.
Makes sense. So we are going to have to make a finding, if you will, that what's being proposed does not impair the architectural, archaeological, or historical integrity of the premises. I think you've spoken to the historical integrity. Can you speak to the architectural and archaeological?
Yes. Architecturally, the exterior of the building from the streetscape will not change. And in fact, the core dimensions of the room will not change. We're not expanding any footprint of the room. It is because the way it was built in 1930 to protect the collections of the Hingham Historical Society. It is a fireproof room in that it has ceramic blocks, 12-inch blocks in the wall, as well as a concrete ceiling and a concrete floor. We are working with Ben Wilcox and team of Wilcox Corporation, who we've partnered with on our historic preservation projects. And they have been able to identify appropriate trenching that would enable us to, again, avoid the historic structure of the house and go down into the foundation to get the plumbing to connect to sewer and get our electrical as well. So architecturally, the core of the Historic House Museum is untouched.
And archaeologically?
We have actually done archaeological because we have a preservation restriction. Whenever work is sought in a home with a preservation restriction, and more importantly, is on the state of Massachusetts Historic Inventory, which is called a MACRIS database. We have a Form B on this property. We are required to do a project notification form with the Mass. Historical Commission, and oftentimes they require an archaeological study, which we needed to do with the property when we laid the fort in 2013. Again, with help from community preservation funds in the Town of Hingham, we moved former town historian John Richardson's 17th-century fort house to the Old Ordinary property, and we did archaeological spot digs at that location, at the annex, and around the house. So we are...we've done an archaeological study, and unfortunately, they didn't come up with anything that we were excited for them to find something, and they didn't find anything.
Okay, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Well, thank you both for your leadership and stewardship. I appreciate the explanations. You certainly answered all of my questions. So in general, I am in support of making it accessible. I think it's a wonderful thing to do for, certainly for our residents as well as visitors to town. So no other questions.
Bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Old Ordinary is an absolute treasure, and very much appreciate, Deirdre, how you share it with all of our residents. Everybody in town has access to it, can learn from it. I know that you, every year, you make efforts to have elementary school students go through there, and it's wonderful. It's a wonderful asset, and Kent, thank you so much for the way that you allow all residents to benefit from it and share with it. And equally as important, Jim Taylor, didn't you have a birthday yesterday? Am I correct?
I did, yes.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy on 38?
Yeah, for the 20-second time.
So I will say, the one question that I have been asked repeatedly is, why is it called the Old Ordinary?
I think you have to come on our tour. Anybody want to guess?
To get an ordinary meal.
Way to go!
I've been on the tour!
I'll put that in the record.
An ordinary with a tavern. Tavern.
Okay. Any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion pursuant to Section 3B of the 2004 Preservation Restriction Agreement between the Town and the Hingham Historical Society. The Board hereby determines that the proposed alterations to the Old Ordinary, as shown on the plans submitted to the Board for Review, will not impair the architectural, archaeological, or historical integrity of the premises, subject to appropriate review of all exterior changes, if any, by the Historic Districts Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
I am an aye as well. You are approved.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Now we move on to police patrol officer interview. We have a candidate, Ryan Hogan. Before you bring him in...
He's already here.
Oh, he is.
He's already here.
So before you do, if you could just step out for one, just one second. So I just want to ask the chief if there's anything that you wanted to...
When you come up to the table.
Yeah, if you want to...
Table.
Yeah. Anything that you wanted to tell us before we bring him in?
No, just the regular process that we go through. Just review it real quick. Candidates take the civil service exam, they're placed on a list. When we have an opening, we contact civil service. They give us a number of candidates. If they're interested, they sign the list up in the Select Board office. So we went through that process. We got some candidates who went through the process, and we have this one that successfully passed everything up until now. So he's come before you tonight for his Select Board interview. He already did the police panel interview last week.
We've seen the write-up, so it was great.
Great.
Anyone else? Either one of you need to add anything?
Just looking forward to...
Okay, great. Okay, great. Okay, please, if you can. Here we are. Ryan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Have you better than you did?
Thanks, buddy. Me too.
So...
Want to let him sit? Do you want him to stand?
Doesn't matter to me.
What, are you afraid to sit or stand?
I can sit.
Sure. So we are going to ask you some interview questions, but before we do, you have an opportunity to make a statement to us. And after the interview questions, you'll have a further opportunity to make a statement to us. So please introduce yourself.
So a little background on me, Ryan Hogan. I grew up in Hanover, Massachusetts. I graduated in 2016. When I got out of high school, I worked for a local landscape company out of Pembroke for about two years. And in 2018, I joined the Marine Corps. I went to boot camp October 15th of 2018, graduated as a platoon undergraduate. I moved on to the Infantry Training Battalion, where I graduated that in April of 2019. I deployed in 2020, where I was meritoriously promoted to Corporal and took control of a four-gun 81-millimeter mortar section. I was honorably discharged in 2022, August of 2022, and I worked for another local landscaping company that my buddy owns out of Hanover. And as I transitioned into a full-time student, which is what I'm doing now, pursuing a degree in criminal justice. So that's what I do now, and things I like to do for fun. I'm a part of a boxing gym out of Cambridge, Massachusetts. I like to golf, but golf doesn't really like me back. But yeah, finding time with family and friends is pretty important as well.
That's great. Thank you. Bill, I'm going to have you lead off.
Sure, yeah. So thanks for being here, and appreciate, very much appreciate your interest in the Police Department. Thank you for your service. Very exemplary, and it's great to always have, you know, strong veterans apply for these positions, which is fantastic. My first question is, where did you deploy to in 2020?
I was a part of a unit deployment program. We went to Japan. And obviously, as everybody knows, 2020 COVID hit pretty bad. So we were supposed to go to the surrounding countries, like we were supposed to go to Thailand, South Korea, but those all got canceled. But I had a great opportunity to work with the Japanese National Defense Force and a lot of partner forces in mainland Japan, as well as the island of Okinawa as well.
Excellent. And your MOS with mortars?
Yes.
Well, in the background investigation, your company commander and your platoon leader spoke extremely highly of you, which is very impressive. So that's fantastic. So speaking of the military, obviously you have a strong military background. What skills did you learn in the military that will benefit you as a Hingham police officer?
Well, I think the biggest thing is being able to work with a diverse group of people. You know, like I said, I've worked with people from Japan, people from the Middle East, from the UK, South America, and it was a great experience. I think that helps a lot. Leadership, I think, as well. You know, as I mentioned, I took control of a four-gun 81-millimeter mortar section, which is like roughly around 30 to 40 Marines. So I think a little bit of that, you know, there's a lot of debriefing and planning that I had to do and explain it to other people, other Marines as well. So I think a few of those things can go a long way.
Great. I think we'll do one round, and then we'll do...
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll wait.
Liz.
Well, thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you. For your service. You have a very impressive background. We appreciate you applying. And to that point, you could apply to be a police officer.
Are you a unit?
You were, yes.
Sorry. Okay, start over. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. You have a very impressive background. What makes you want to be a police officer in Hingham?
Yeah, so like I said, I was a South Shore kid. My grandparents grew up in Cohasset, so I was going back and forth from Hanover to Cohasset while obviously passing through towns like Norwell, Hingham. And I think I originally would have, or I originally would have worked for, I was going for Boston Police. And I thought, you know, I took some time to think about it, and I just imagined myself grazing a family in the South Shore instead of, you know, somewhere like the city. And then I got the opportunity when Hingham, you know, the Civil Service Department reached out and said that Hingham was looking to hire some police officers. So I jumped on it immediately, and I'm so glad I did. I'm really happy for the opportunity, and I'm excited.
Excellent. Excellent.
So I will say, you've done a great job in selecting the color of your necktie. You know, you're in already. Let me ask you, how would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
I would think my communication skills are pretty well. I think going back to some of the things that I did in the military, I was told by company commander one time, when you're giving a debrief, you want to make sure you explain it so that the lowest-level enlisted person could understand. So somebody who's completely green, you know, has only been on the job for, say, you know, a couple months or whatever, what have you, so that they know exactly what they're doing, what their job is. So I think just continuing to work on being concise and clear and getting my point across when I speak is things that I try to work on. And I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you. Bill.
So community policing efforts is really the cornerstone of the Hingham Police Department, and I would submit to you it's probably one of the best departments in the state that effectively integrates itself with the community and does a phenomenal job of making our residents part of what they do as police officers. What skills would you bring to help enhance those efforts, either through your personality or through things you've done in the past?
Yeah, I think, you know, kind of another reason why Hingham would be such a great department to work at is because there's such a wide variety of ways you could perform community policing in a day-to-day basis, whether, you know, Halloween, you go to a busy neighborhood and you hand out candy to trick-or-treaters, or you stop at the coffee corner and have a cup of coffee with an elderly person, you know, that maybe, you know, hasn't had a conversation with somebody in a while. So I think the biggest thing that I would try to bring is just being that friendly neighborhood face and have people kind of look at me as like a safe space almost and to be available for anybody regardless of who they are or their dilemma, and try to help them as best as I could.
Great. So we talked a little bit about leadership and communication. Obviously, community policing is very important to us. What quality do you think is the most important for a police officer?
I think probably good character and good morals. I think you need to be understanding as well. But I think above all, you know, having a good character, good judgment. You know, at the end of the day, we're all just people that have similarities and differences. So regardless of what you're going to a call for or what you, you know, have to deal with on that certain call, you know, you're there to listen and figure out what's going on and make sure the community and everybody around you is safe.
Excellent. Excellent. Can you give an example of a situation where you exhibited that sense of character?
I would say, I think in the Marine Corps, I was never really faced with a dilemma where somebody was in trouble. There was a time where a fellow Marine, the suicide rates in the military are pretty rough. And there was a time where a fellow Marine was going through some bad times. He reached out to me, and I tried to help him get the help that he needed. And I think that's the closest thing that I had. It ended up working out, and he's still a good friend of mine today, so I'm glad.
Excellent. Yeah, that's so important. And certainly, many of the police calls we have here are related to that sort of struggle or mental illness. So that's an important point. Thank you.
So I'm going to follow up a little bit on what Liz was asking, but focusing specifically on stressful situations. I think you just identified one.
Right.
But how are you in dealing with stressful situations? How do you feel? And can you give another example of how you dealt successfully with a stressful situation?
Absolutely. I think I handle them pretty well. You know, and I give thanks to the Marine Corps for that. I was never in a combat zone, so I can't speak to that. But I was, however, on, you know, hundreds of live-fire ranges with 81-millimeter mortar cannons, which have a blast radius of about 50 meters. So we did an exercise out west in 29 Palms in California. It's called ITX. And basically what it is, it's a large shoot. It's called Range 400 Alpha. And I had four guns firing off 12 rounds a minute. The winds were howling. It's in the desert, and I had to make sure that there was a maneuver element as well that we were firing over. So I had to make sure all the gun data was correct. Everybody was firing at the proper time and that we cut our fires off as soon as the maneuver element hit their objective. So I guess that would probably be the most stressful situation I've been in because I had, you know, my friends' lives and the lives of the people that were assessing us as well. But I'm still here, and so are they, so I think it went well.
That's great. So the process that we're going to follow is we're going to consider your responses. We have information that the chief has submitted to us, and we're going to review that. And then in about a little over a week, we're going to reconvene and take a vote to decide on your candidates.
Fantastic.
Anything that you would like to add?
I think I just want to thank everybody, especially the members of the police that are here, for considering me. Like I said before, Hingham would be a fantastic town. You know, growing up in the South Shore, I would love to, you know, kind of give back to the community that I grew up in, that gave me so much as a kid. So thank you again, and it was nice meeting everybody.
Great. Good to see you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry? Yes. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Stryker for an automated external defibrillator, actually plural, defibrillators, and training kits for the Police Department. Chief Jones, if you want to tell us what you need?
Sure. So these are approved through Capitol for this fiscal year. There is a total of 30 AEDs that are replacing our current AEDs that we have. This round of AEDs is consistent with the ones that the Fire Department purchased, so we'll all be operating the same brand of AEDs, which is obviously important on scenes for the equipment's interchangeable. The other equipment that's listed on there, the training equipment and carrying bags and stuff, is to provide the officers training on the new AEDs.
Are we disposing of any AEDs that are no longer useful?
So we're going to keep some that are still operable as spares. Some, were there trade-ins on these ones? I can't remember. I can't remember. I believe there is some that are being traded in as part of the quote.
What's the useful life? Do you know?
I anticipate probably 10 years.
And I do know this was, it's consistent with the budget that was planned. How often are they used? Do you have any records?
Yeah, I mean, they definitely have been used. As far as frequency, I don't know exactly how often they're used.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
Is it a different technology or upgraded from the ones we currently have?
Yeah, it's the same type of AED that the officers are used to, just the use of it's a little bit different and the tracking of it is new, so it allows our medical officer, who's Officer McCracken, to be able to track like the battery health and things like that. So she'll be able to stay on top of things like that with ease.
Great. And I know it's covered by Capitol funding, certainly seems like an important thing to have and keep up with, so no other questions.
Mr. Ramsey.
Who, so in terms of the training, does Officer McCracken train other members of the department or does the fire department come over and work with you on that?
Both.
Both?
It's mainly Officer McCracken that handles the training though.
Great. I spoke with one of your officers recently who, I think he came up on somebody playing tennis and I believe he might have used an AED or used CPR to save the person's life a couple of months ago. And I thought, he said he might have used AED, but he definitely used this type of first aid to get blood pumping from this person's heart and he was able to do an effective enough job until the fire department got there and it would save the person's life. So this equipment and having a state-of-the-art is extremely valuable for our residents, so happy to support it.
You don't want it missing in the moment, so.
No.
Tom, anything you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Stryker Sales LLC for automated external defibrillators and trainer kits for the police department in an amount not to exceed $69,241.23.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well. It's approved, thank you.
Great, thank you. Can I just jump in just real quick?
Please.
Try to get a signed copy before I sign it tomorrow.
I will.
Thank you.
I sent it late, about an hour ago.
Oh.
Next on our agenda is discussion of possible mooring fees and we have Ken Corson here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Not used to seeing you out of uniform.
Well, it happens every now and then. Give you maybe refreshing.
So I know comments went out, I mean, the proposed regulations and the proposed fees went out. Can you discuss with us responses, if any, that you received?
Yeah, we got, we did get a few responses, you know, just a couple reflecting that might be high and some totally off topic.
That will happen, you know that.
But we always appreciate comments and suggestions and so forth. I think there are just about 11 of them, so there weren't that many. And those were mainly primarily about the fees.
Fees.
Yeah. The regulations are basically all done, they've gone through the entire process. So those are, I've gone through the room-making process and I'm just notifying you that they're going to get published and so forth.
Right, so there's no action that this board is taking? You've gone through the appropriate process to get them promulgated?
That's correct, right. Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And those are also brought to the attention of the voting community?
Yes.
And how do you do that?
So they'll get published on our website and then we use, we have the ability to email them, so they'll get emails that, you know, that they're up there and so forth. But there's nothing that's really going to change anything that they're doing or we're doing. It's basically just kind of updating things to where we are from a number of years ago.
Okay. And with respect to the fees, I've gotten comments as well that people are concerned about the increase. Do you have a proposed schedule as to how you see fees increasing over the years? Is it something that would happen every two years, three years, annually? And maybe in part that's driven on what those fees are used for, what costs need to be recovered? Just, do you have a description of how you plan to proceed in the future?
Yeah, so I just bring it to your attention what the fees are. Obviously, you make the, you know, you set the fees and so forth. I may make a recommendation just to give you some guidance, what other communities are. But the goal with a fee, it's not a tax, so what we, really what we do is we look at what our expenses are and we're allowed to cover our expenses for the harbor master's operation through the fee, but it's not really supposed to exceed that. Now, it doesn't mean that every year it has to be a break even because some years we have capital expenses and so forth, but overall it should be kind of a, just covering your costs, otherwise it becomes a tax. So in the past, what I've typically done is just every periodically report to the board what the fee is, what fees are neighboring communities, what our expenses are, and then maybe they chose to increase to a certain number or maintain what we are at. We've traditionally done like a schedule over four years, just so we're not coming back two years later to kind of revisit it and we can let people know in advance. I guess what I would suggest at this point is, you know, we need to get mooring permits out and so forth and I don't want this to be any type of a rushed decision and we're kind of getting late into the process, so maybe we consider this throughout the next year and make a change for the following year, if the change is deemed to be what we want to do.
So you would be comfortable without having any additional changes to fees currently and then looking at it, when it comes up again next year?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Liz?
And I guess it's, I don't actually need a fee, but I'm just reporting to you what the fees are. I don't need to increase it. It's not something that I'm here saying I need, but I just want you to be aware of what our fees are, what our revenues are, what our expenses are, in case you feel as though you want to raise them.
Got it. Liz.
Excellent, well, thank you, Ken. I think I'm more comfortable with that approach and studying this a little more. I appreciate what you said, that the fees should match the expenses, and I would like to dig into that a little more. I know you talked about a multi-year mooring plan when I first started, so I also want to revisit that and make sure that we're aligned with what your vision is for the mooring field in general. And then, you know, some of the things that I've been asking questions about are what are the services that we offer to our mooring permit holders, our transient moorings, and how does that compare when looking at our benchmark towns and the fees that they're charging? And just what is that whole experience, you know, using the website to reserve the mooring, looking into, you know, a technology like Daqua and just make sure that that's a good experience for people. So I think I would feel most comfortable kind of digging into this a little more and understanding that holistic vision.
Sure, absolutely.
Bill.
Yeah, well, generating more income is always something, I think, on all of our minds, but I would not be in favor of raising fees, mooring fees or any fees unless it's a defined need on the other end. So I think this is something for us to consider as we move through, you know, this year, next year, going forward, but I appreciate your candor in saying that we really don't need to do it now, it's something we should consider in the future, so I would certainly be in favor of holding off, holding what we have now and then considering when the need arises and we need to increase it. So appreciate your hard work here, Ken, and putting the information forward.
You're welcome.
I would just urge that we, to the extent that we anticipate fees, that we do it in a gradual fashion, because if there are, if there's going to be a spike in costs, I'd rather not have a spike in the fees, but have them go up on a slow incremental basis so that the public isn't jarred unnecessarily. But I take it that the recommendation really is that we not increase the fees right now. And if that's the case, I do not believe that we need a vote since the current fees were previously approved.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments from members of the public?
Can I just make one more comment, Joe? I would encourage residents and neighboring voters to continue to send feedback, right? Is that fair?
Sure, yeah.
And it should go to the harbor master email?
Yep.
Because I am concerned a little bit by the response that enough people don't know about it and I don't want to be in this position again next year where people don't know and we don't feel like we have enough public feedback. So certainly encourage people to get engaged and send their feedback now in advance of a potential decision next year.
Yeah, and if we were to engage in this again for next year, we'd probably, I'd probably start it earlier. I think we started in September, but it get, you know, schedules get busy, so maybe we'd start it sometime in the spring.
Yeah.
So there's plenty of time to have the discussions and the thoughtful process before we would need to make any change if we did.
Great, yes, I totally agree with that. Thank you.
So we will put it on our calendar.
Do you mind if I jump in for a minute? So I spoke with Ken a couple of times about this and I think what we need to do is work on a cyclical plan so that we have a repeatable process that every year, every other year, however often the board feels it wants mooring fees reviewed or can feels they need to be reviewed, that we have a regular process with known metrics that will feed that process and kick out a recommendation at the end of it. That should include reviews of not just the fees, but also the services provided, the software used, the, you know, the modernness of whatever process we end up engaging in. And if we can do that on, throughout the year process, Ken, then we identify a date when we want to come back and we have, everything's already done every year when we need it to and we're just presenting a known process to the board with a new recommendation. So that's what I, I think that's what we can work on implementing. So I don't know that it's the spring as much as a now and through the year, work on an outcome now so that we can build this repeatable, regular process.
I think we're prepared then to move on, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of Amendment Number Three to the agreement with Foth Infrastructure, Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC for the Harbor Waterfront Resiliency Project. David, you're having a busy evening.
Yeah, thank you. So just for a quick history of kind of where we are now, so this is the Amendment Number Three in regards to the Harbor Water Resiliency Project. The funding in Article from Annual Town Meeting of 2023. The original contract was of June 6th of '23.
Right.
And then the Amendment Number Two is actually just to extend the length of time. There was not enough value associated with Amendment Number Two. And the contract through 12 months, which was January 1 of 2026, which brings us to tonight, seeking the approval of the proposed Amendment Three. The term of the contract would be through June 30th of 2025 and the value should not exceed 320,000, 325.
If I can interrupt, the document we have, I think, shows June 30th of 2026. I just want to make sure we know what's correct.
Of the contract?
Yes.
Correct, the term of the contract extended through June 30th of 2026. That is correct. I must, I misspoke.
Okay.
On the memo and on the contract, it is ending through June 30th of 2026.
Right, okay.
Yes, okay. I misspoke, thank you. So the price to not exceed 320,000, 325 for a new contract total of 693,595. And then the funding source also in the memo is Article 24 of the Annual Town Meeting of 2023, 360,000 from Municipal Water Waste Fund plus two CZM coastal resiliency grants In addition to Amendment Three is also the scope of services and the addendum as well.
Just a general statement to, JR couldn't be here tonight. I did speak with him, this is the planned next step for permitting. As we complete this MEPA process, this will allow us to go to the next phase of permitting. So this is anticipated, this was planned, it's all part of the efforts to get our wharf walls improved down at the harbor.
So David, just turning to the numbers, so I'm clear, the, this particular amendment is for 320,000, 325.
That's correct.
And how much of that is covered by the CZM grant? Is it the 287, 928?
All of it.
They're not, but the town has to do a 10% match, so.
Right. It's the 287, 928.
Oh, yeah, right here, the 287, 928.
Right, so we would be responsible for 10% of the 320. In terms of, the contract is written as if we are responsible for the entire amount. And it's my understanding of the process is that the town is in fact responsible for the entire amount and then we recover the 287 from CZM. Is that the way it works? So the town pays the full amount, then we recoup?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Just related to that, so we're obviously still within the amount that was budgeted between the Municipal Water Waste Fund and the grants, right? Are we at risk that we will go over budget with whatever the next phase of the project is?
Well, the way JR explained it was this is the next phase and this was a planned expense, so.
Okay.
But Liz is asking about the phase after this.
There's no indication that we would be over budget.
Okay.
Okay.
And don't forget, there's still an appropriation, an authorization to borrow from a few years ago in town meeting for almost $6 million for a town pier, so that would be some piece of it too.
And that's already been, that's already been approved?
Yes, we may need to change the scope at town meeting to expand it, but that was from a few years ago and that construction, like this is really the first phase of it, so there is that authorization out there.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason why we need to change the scope is at the time, that wasn't contemplated that we would be planning for the entire harbor basin.
Right.
And now we are.
Right, okay, thank you.
Bill.
Are you able to speak to what the next phase is and the timeline for the project?
You know, I.
I can wait for JR.
Yeah, so when I asked him, I believe the plan is to be able in quote-unquote Phase One will be to bring us from the bathing beach up to the mobile station property. And then beyond that, Whitney Wharf doesn't need to be rebuilt and then after that, we're into bonds. So it's, there's, I think, a three-phase total. I don't, I can't definitively tell you, but it looks like it's that chunk in the middle is this work.
Any thoughts on timing? Or is it going to depend on?
Yeah, so timing is important, right? We're trying to coordinate all of this while we're doing the harbor master plan in the harbor and the 3A Road project. So timing, the harbor development committee is all over it. Everybody's, JR especially, has got an eye towards timing the state. It's important to the state to make sure that things are done appropriately and the right scheduling. So I can't tell you right now offhand what month this project is happening versus that one, but it's all being timed together.
Due speed.
Due speed. And I'll note, well, it's not really related to this, we are very much working on a comprehensive communication plan for the entirety of that work at the harbor. It's going to be some disruption and we need to make sure that the public knows what is being disrupted and when.
And why.
It's for alternative routes and why and all that, so we're working on that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michelle, this is a question for you. So given that we, we're spending money going out and then we're going to recover 90% of it from CZM, how does that affect our budget if the recovery is in a different fiscal year?
It doesn't matter as much because it's in a separate grant fund and a capital project fund. So Ann and JR went through kind of the ins and outs.
And I'm an a as well. Approved. Moving to public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any comments? Seeing and hearing none, we move to the town administrator and select board reports, starting with Michelle.
I just want to thank Town Clerk Carol Falvey and her whole team for all of the enormous hours and work and effort they put in over the last several months, planning for and then running a smooth election process. So thank you to her whole group there. Now they're in recovery mode.
Yes, they earned her recovery. Great. Tom?
So it's happened. The budget has begun. The budget process has begun. We sent out our budget memo last week, a level services budget, and we had our first budget hearing today with the fire department. We'll be meeting with police, the police team tomorrow, and all the departments start, we start the parade. So you'll all be getting notices, or we'll start scheduling the department reviews here in the next month or so as we get through the process. We're on the treadmill, folks.
Hey, Tom, thanks for leading that.
The good news.
Yes. Liz?
Excellent. Thank you to the town clerk's office, the entire team. I echo everything Michelle says. Tremendous amount of work and successfully executed. I'm going to say congrats to the state champs, crew team, and good luck to boys soccer and field hockey this week, and happy Veterans Day to all our veterans. We had a wonderful ceremony over the weekend. Our chair did a wonderful job speaking, and thank Keith German for his service and putting the ceremony together.
Great. Bill?
I just want to add Liz's comments. The Hingham Youth Football, Hingham Youth Football, two weeks ago, the eighth grade team, the sixth grade team, and the fourth grade team all won their Super Bowls in the Bay State League. So very impressive that the program has so many wonderful teams competing at such a high level. It's been a dominant program. I'm very fortunate to coach the sixth grade team. My son Peter is on the team and want to extend a special congratulations to those players and the guys I coached with, wonderful group. So congratulations to everybody.
Great.
Congratulations.
And just wanted to thank all those who participated in the Veterans Day proceedings, the ceremony, our town moderator, and really everyone who was there. It was a very memorable event. That's all I got. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an a as well. We are adjourned.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.